2020, I'd like to welcome everybody to the, our regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to stand and have our invocation and pledge. Ms. Paula Pennington's going to do that for us. Thank you.
Out of a show of respect, would everybody please bow in prayer now? Thank you. Dear Lord, I just thank you for the honor and the pleasure of having the privilege to come tonight before you, dear Lord, to just ask your blessings upon this meeting, dear Lord. I thank you for the opportunity that I've been given to be asked to lead this prayer, dear God. I just ask that you now continue to plant your hedge of protection around this nation, dear God, in, in all that's going on around us and overseas, dear Lord, and all that's stirring up right now. And I just pray, dear God, that you just be with our armed forces for the men and women who serve actively, dear God. Just continue to watch over them, lead, guide, and direct them, dear God, and just keep them safe and keep them out of harm's way, dear Lord. And I thank you for allowing us to live in this great nation, dear Lord, where we can continue to experience the freedom that you've given us, dear God. To be able to come to you freely and to pray to you without hesitation, dear God, is a freedom that we often take for granted. And so I want to just thank you now for the opportunity that you give us to continue to bestow upon you our, our prayer. I just ask now that you just be with this board, dear Lord. Just lead, guide, and direct them in the decisions that they have to make for us as citizens and constituents, dear Lord. I just ask that they will be mindful and that they will do what is best for the citizens of this county that we live in, dear Lord. And I just thank you for this, this county and for the citizens and for all that we share as a community, dear Lord. You've blessed us. You've given us much to be thankful for. And so often, dear God, we just take all those blessings that you've given us and we take them for granted. So tonight, dear Lord, I just hope and pray that everyone will just stop and just be mindful of everything that you've done for us, dear Lord, and how you've continued to bless us. I ask you now that you just take over this, this board meeting, dear Lord, and just let this board serve you and do what is honoring in your name. And it's in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight is approval amendments from our December 17th, 2019, regular board meeting. Do I have any comments or concerns on, or do I have a motion?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman. I offer a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gamble, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion. Moving on to the consent agenda, items two through 14. Do I have any items wishing to be pulled for discussion? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We've still got a couple of minutes. I'm going to move ahead. We got an, just, we're going to move to item number 19. Having additional agenda item. Actually have two there. Item number one is authorized purchase of new servers and IT equipment for various Board of County Commissioner departments. It's a budgeted item. Have any questions or comments on this?
I've just got one question, but I'm going to ask if he's still here. Shannon, come up and address that for me. It's just about the security part of it, Shannon, what we talked about earlier.
Right. You'd requested earlier this morning that we have a discussion with Mr. Vance Baker regarding the items, the bill of material. We did have that discussion, Mr. Thompson and myself, along with Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker was in favor of moving forward with the bill of materials except a certain list of Cisco devices. His concern was that he wanted to have more time to discuss how those items would be used and how they would be configured and how that configuration would align with his approach to security. So Mr. Thompson and I both felt that was a reasonable course of action. And with that, Mr. Baker gave us his endorsement to move forward with the procurement of everything on the bill of materials except those devices. From a numbers perspective, if you, the price that's listed in the additional item, that price will be decreased by $14,705.01, which means we would end up spending $36,846.04 versus what stated in the additional item. It would be our intent to arrange another discussion with Mr. Baker sometime in the future to review those Cisco items and then collaborate to determine how best to implement them on the network.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question for, is it just the, the brand of the equipment or its capability that is in question or?
No, Mr. Baker did raise, he said a couple of things about these devices. Number one, he is familiar with them, so they weren't a surprise to him. The thing that he mentioned to Mr. Thompson and I was the fact that he felt like we were moving too quickly and he wanted to have discussions about setting up the configuration, because those are security devices. That's part of what they do. He wanted to be sure that the way they were implemented and configured was aligned with his strategy of a layered protection across all the different security components in the network, which I thought was a valid piece.
Sure, makes sense.
So that, that was his main concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one question. Shannon, are any of these prices contingent upon all of this or all of this being purchased at one time? Are we going to lose any kind of price discounts or anything from loss of this at this point?
No, sir. We can modify the quote. It's presented on really an item by item or à la carte basis. So we'll work with the sales representative and let them know that we're going to modify it and remove items and it won't affect the price. The price that we've been quoted is based on a competitively bid GSA contract. So it's, you know, you pick the things you want, you buy them, and the price is the price based on the GSA contract.
Thank you.
Any more questions? With that being said, do I have a motion to approve?
I got a motion to approve the purchase minus the Cisco items with their total of $14,705.01 being subtracted from the total.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Item number two, approve issuance of payment to Florida Gulf and Atlantic Railroad, LLC for rail crossing design in the amount of $38,447. It's, it's a budgeted item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The board previously approved entering into the agreement in an amount not to exceed $40,000. So I went to work on that. It came back at, I think, $46,000 or $48,000. So we worked through some issues with the company and they get it back down to $38,447. The reason that I'm bringing it back, though, was that we need to let finance, I need to get the payment approved so that finance will go ahead and write the check rather than wait two weeks to get that done. The design work can be completed in about three weeks. That's in the agreement, but that's after they've received payment. I don't want to wait five weeks to get this design underway because we need to move on some of the other grants that we have associated with improvements out there.
Just for anybody that's, to understand what we're talking about that hasn't been up to date on it, it's a railroad crossing at the Catalyst site and we're trying to enter into a design phase of that. So this is what this discussion's about. Do I have any questions, comments from the board?
I just comment. I mean, you, you explained it perfectly and it's something that is way past due and I just appreciate you working on, Mr. Harris, getting the price down. I know that we had a set price before the railroad sold and changed, and I appreciate that, but that's all I got to say.
I will add that today I was with Mr. Norris and we sat in a meeting. For those of you that don't know, the railroad has been sold and a new company has taken over. And those folks have reached out to us and actually come to Swanee County today and had a meeting, some of their leadership. And really, really good meeting, positive. They want to try to help promote Swanee County and try to build rail service and, and it was just, I was really grateful for how well the meeting went and look forward to what the future holds and hopefully we can bring more jobs and businesses to Swanee County and it'll help us and it'll help that, build that railroad's revenue. And at the same time, we'll build this Swanee, we'll build this county together. So I would say that I was grateful of that meeting. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to back up now. We have three time-specific items. What I'd like to do, I realize item number 15, we're going to have some pretty lengthy discussion on that. I'm going to go ahead and do items 16 and 17. If I could get Mr. Meeks to come forward. These should be fairly quick, so, and then we'll, we'll have plenty of time to address item 15. We'll go with item 16 at 6:05 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. We'll consider preliminary plat approval of Fields of Falmouth. Got Mr. Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman? If anybody in the audience anticipates that they may speak for or against this item, would you stand to be sworn?
It is.
Item 16.
Yes, it's just for item 16.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand, Ms. Meeks? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, thank you. As you approach the podium, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Meeks, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, board members, what you have before you is a preliminary plat approval for subdivision named Fields of Falmouth. It is a 20.97 acre parcel located in section 36, township one south, range 12 east, at the intersection of 153rd Road and 52nd Street. Before you guys get out there and start unfolding those papers, you're playing.
Okay. Those are huge.
Thank you, sir.
I've already unfolded it once today and couldn't get it folded back up in the right place.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
As I previously stated, this is a preliminary plat approval. The original submittal that we had, which is the large version, there was a couple of items that was missing off of the preliminary plat submittal, so Mr. Alcorn, the surveyor, did include those missing items. And so we got him to print some smaller versions that you have before you tonight that you can kind of handle a little bit better. There were just some minor issues with subwording and stuff that was missing off the plat that was, that was added. The subdivision contains a total of four, five acre lots. The access for the lots will be off of 153rd Road, which is a county paved road. Land use requirements for subdivision lots do require that they have direct access to paved roads, so 153rd Road does meet that requirement. As I previously stated, there was a few discrepancies missing off the original submittal. Those have been corrected. We're also waiting on a letter from the Environmental Health Department that would state that the septic systems and private water wells that would be located on the property for the improvements would be acceptable under the county's health guidelines. Kind of pretty standard letter, but we don't have that letter at this time. So what we would ask you to do is if you're going to give your approval for the preliminary plat, we would do that contingent upon us receiving that letter. This, at, this subdivision will come back before the board for final plat approval at least 30 days out. The land use requires at least 30 days before you grant final plat approval, so we anticipate somewhere between 30 to 45 days having a final plat coming back before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Do I have any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question and it's specifically about this one, but in, in general, I guess, because there's a reason why I'm looking at this. Under these designs, I see that in the middle there is a right-of-way designation for future, future road. Do, number one, in, in this particular situation with this, this was, still would not make it a, categorize it as a complete subdivision that requires paved roads in and out and just like that. So my question comes in and is, at what point in the future does this road potentially either become a problem for us because there's a question of who's going to maintain it or is it something that they're maintaining, they're designing, the, the owner of this property, the developer of this property is, is going to engineer it and everything himself?
This subdivision plat specifically would pertain to the four lots that you see accessing 153rd Road. If there is additional lands that would be located to the west that would be developed in the future, it would require that they have a 60-foot right-of-way of which they would require to be put in a 20-foot wide paved road built to DOT standards, and that would be where that would be located.
Okay.
That may not ever happen. That may just be a whole piece that is there for many years. But if that other property is divided, that would be the access point which would be improved to our county standards for a, for a paved road.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Hearing none.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Meeks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meeks, you have a file with all of the submittals and everything in it. Would you like to submit that into evidence to be presented to the board?
Sure, yeah.
All right, I'll take in the file and all of that. All of the exhibits contained therein is composite exhibit number one. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we will close public comment. Do I have any other board discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll offer, offer a motion to approve contingent upon the letter that Mr. Meeks mentioned that we needed to receive first.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll close public hearing. We'll move on to item 17. At 6:05 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, we will hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP-20-01-01 by Brandon Finch, agent for Duke Energy Florida, to be granted a special permit under section 4.4.5B12 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for Utilities and Related Facilities. Mr. Ron Meeks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, again, if there's anyone that anticipates being able to speak on item number 17, would you also stand to be sworn? Gentlemen, Mr. Meeks, your oath will carry over. Gentlemen, do you swear or affirm the, the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God? All right, thank you. And again, whenever you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Meeks, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a special permit request for utilities and related facilities. The specifics on the project is a site located on a 16-acre parcel located in section 30, township one south, range 12 east. Access to the site will be off of US 90. The request of this special permit is to construct a maintenance building that will be for, a maintenance building for the electrical substation and solar site that is located just west of the site off of River Road. I have given you a vicinity map on the aerial that kind of shows you the 16-acre parcel, which is highlighted in the red. It's a triangular-shaped property. And if you'll look to the immediate west, you'll see the location of Duke Energy's solar field, and then you'll come in intersection with River Road, and then west of that site will be the location of where the Duke Energy substation is. They have a need that has arose with the need of a maintenance building. They have, you know, own this property here. It's a convenient access to the solar site as well as the substation. So in the attachments that you have, under the special permit request, there is a site plan that shows the layout of the 16-acre parcel. Also inclusive of that shows the location of the building. A portion of the square footage in there will be used for office space, the other portion of the building being used for warehousing of materials and equipment. You have the parking areas that are shown, as well as some ancillary uses that will be around the building, such as refuse areas, fuel tank storage, and things like that. It does fall as a, a use that would be like an accessory or incidental and subordinate to the adjoining use for their solar site and, and substations that are located there. I don't have anything else to add as far as this request, so I would enter the file into the record. There is representatives from Duke Energy present tonight that can answer any other questions that you may have specific to the construction in the site. If you have those, I would ask that they would come up and answer any of those questions if the board has them. If you don't, that's all I would have and I would enter the file into the record.
Thank you. I'll take the file and it's composite exhibit number one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Do I have any questions from the board? Hearing none, at this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Do I have anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Any other board discussion or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak to one of the representatives.
Yes, sir. They will come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Danny Collins, Duke Energy, Florida, 425 East High Street, Monticello, Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Under the request, you make a mention that there is, you would prefer to have a reduced number of parking spaces that are required for a commercial site. That would be a special condition that would have to be granted by the board. Can you tell us what the number, what the proposed number is and what the proposed number should be?
Proposed number, sorry, Brandon Finch, McAdams, 2005 Meridian Parkway, Durham, North Carolina.
Thank you.
It's one per 150. I think it's 56 spaces, maybe 57. I'm doing that math, I think correct, and we're proposing, I think, 24 or 25. That's what I'm covering.
All right, thank you. So that's the only question I have. I just want to make a comment to the board then that when you do, if you do propose to accept a special exception, you have to put a condition on the special exception, acknowledging the reduction of the parking spaces from 56, 57 down to the requested 24.
And, and just to clarify, this is not a, a public facility where we're, we're bringing in customers. This is only for our employees. We don't, we don't have a need for, for greater parking.
Well, you all have, was it three or four full-time employees working out there now?
Oh, I'd say probably five.
Yeah, I know it was in that area.
But we'll be around 13, 15 when this building's done. We're moving some folks from other locations.
Good, that's good.
Net gain to Swanee County.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
No, I'm good. I'm good. It pretty much answered my question.
You sure?
Yep.
Do I have any other questions or concerns?
No, sir.
From the board? With that being said, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve with a condition on the parking spaces. Never stated.
I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Five oh.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll close public hearing. I would just like to thank everybody for giving us a few minutes to get the normal business out of the way. I feel like this is going to be an in-depth conversation and I wanted to give it all of, all of us to have, for you to have our full attention. So with that being said, the only thing I'd like to ask is, this is, this is a working board. We work for all of you, the taxpayers of this county. Everybody up here will be very respectful and I just ask that as we come forward and we talk and we work through these issues, that we do it with respect to each other. There's just no room in here for disrespect. We're going, we expect to be treated fair and we're going to treat you and work for you to the best of our ability. And I just ask that and we'll move forward. As we do, we'll have, if somebody wishes to be heard, they will have the opportunity to speak. We do have some rules that we like to follow, three minutes per person. If we have a person that's speaking for a group, we'll do seven minutes. And I don't have a problem if it takes a minute longer, I'm not going to put you on a watch at this point. But I'd just like to ask everybody to be courteous and let's, let's work together. We're a community. We, we obviously have two different views on this and we're going to work through it. But with that being said, we will move forward. Item number 15, at 6:05 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, we will have a discussion on 180th Street. Mr. Stephen Browning and Mr. Michael Brock from Florida Department of Transportation, welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Browning with the Florida Department of Transportation and also have Michael Brock. So we wanted to provide a status update of where we are on the 180th Bridge Replacement Project. As you know, it's your road. There are federal funds involved. There are federal funds involved in just replacing the bridge as we move forward, so we are administering the project. We, typical what we do with these off-system bridge replacement projects. But again, it's your road, your facility. You're going to operate and maintain it when we get done. So back in November 20th, 2018, I actually came to this board and asked for kind of input on the detour route of that option, thinking we just had a project, a Scott project out there that detoured traffic, so it seemed like a, a good solution. We'd already done it, so let's just move forward. But the board asked us, DOT, to go, go to the public, obtain input, which we did. We, we actually went back February 18th, 2019, and held a public meeting. We had 37 people in attendance and we had an overwhelming support for eliminating the detour and, and looking at other options. So we went back to the drawing board and really came to the conclusion that the northern option, move, shift the bridge to a permanent northern option was the best solution. It might have been, as the impacts, it was the lowest cost and was the ideal solution based on the input we received. So we mailed out a flyer back in September of 2019 to kind of notify everybody of where we were and what we were doing. Kind of back up just a little bit. So why are we replacing the bridge? The bridge was built originally in 1940, so it's 80 years. I mean, it's met its useful life. It's been repaired, rehabbed several times. Back in 2015, 2016, there was a Scott project and unfortunately, the condition of the bridge, it's scheduled to be replaced, so we're planning to do that in 2023. In doing that, there are going to be some impacts. Unfortunately, it's, it's, it's tough. I mean, people utilize 180th Street traveling kind of east-west, so there are going to be some impacts when you replace it, no matter what you do. So we tried to minimize the impacts as much as we could and look at the challenges. And currently today, based on the input we receive, we're planning to move forward with the northern option to replace the bridge, which is shown in the exhibit, as you've seen, which is also in your handout package. Any questions, any comments?
I have a question. It's just, and it may just be a clarification. You mentioned when you went to look at options to avoid a detour, you used the word "the lowest cost." Was it the lowest cost of the options or is it cheaper to replace the bridge where it currently exists?
It is cheaper to replace the bridge where it currently is. Unfortunately, it will put the bridge out of service and we'll have to utilize the detour routes. And there are some concerns with the detour routes. One being the dirt road to the north being around three miles in length and the paved road to the south. I mean, both are pretty narrow. So we were, that's again, a reason we went to the public, because we knew there were some challenges associated with the detour routes. But yes, the detour is always the ideal option to replace the bridge, get in and out. Quickest option, cheapest option, is usually the best option to move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. First of all, I want to say I appreciate it. And this is a project that's in my district, and it's obviously a project that is something that, that needs to be done. And I definitely don't want to be misinterpreted as biting the hand that's, that's really helping us. And you guys are doing a magnificent job and do that. Having said that, I am asking, what, I know when I came and spoke with you guys, gave me a variety of options that you had looked at. Could you, we know that there, one of them was a detour, and the other three were not detour, were no detours. Could you elaborate a little bit on, on them? And then, and then, and come down to why you chose this option over the other three? One of them is going to be a common sense one, but I just want to hear you.
So Dilly, again, we, we start moving forward with the detour, and we go out, present that to the public and kind of get the input. I mean, we, we see some of the challenges, but we don't always know the challenges with the detour. Then when we went back and looked at the options, we looked at kind of a permanent shift to the north, a permanent shift to the south, but also a temporary diversion to the north. And the biggest issue with the southern diversion or shift is the number of properties you impact. You impact more properties around seven homeowners versus kind of two to the north or three to the north. I'm sorry, three.
And that was because of the...
The geometry, yeah.
Yeah, the traffic. You had to renegotiate curve.
The geometry out there, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, we are on a tangent, but you do have two curves as you approach either end. So it does lean itself to, again, shifting it to the north and smoothing out that curve to the east. So it does improve the geometry going to the north also.
Now, this, the expensive option that we haven't talked about yet involved a temporary bridge. That's Acro Bridge, is that what you call it?
Correct, yes.
I termed it correctly. And, and that one was, my understanding, if I remember the, the numbers correctly, cheapest option is about 1.9, best option is about 2.9. Is that correct? Something like that, 2. something?
Yeah, the detour is about 1.9 million, and yes, the temporary Acro Bridge is about 2.9, so a million dollars more.
Okay. One question that I haven't got answered yet, because I assumed that we have about 20, what, 20, 25 foot of right-of-way space easement, the utility easement on the, on the south side of the bridge, was why even your Acro Bridge design would have gone temporarily to the north as well and not to the south, where there's less trees to take, to remove? I know that that's a concern of, of some of the residents out there. So I'm just curious about that one at this point.
So going to the south, the geometry and everything, you, you actually impact a little bit more property, and you're going to have to maintain the utilities as you move forward.
And we're talking about the Acro Bridge, correct?
Right. Either way, you're going to have to move the utilities. I mean, and unfortunately, with an Acro Bridge, you have to build a bridge to replace a bridge, which costs you a lot more. I mean, again, it's about $700,000 more to do an Acro Bridge versus a temporary or permanent shift to the north. So honestly, the department is not looking at the Acro as an option. We're either looking at the detour or the northern, northern permanent shift, so.
And then one last question. Can you explain, number one, how you will be going about getting the additional land on the north, or if you even went to the south? Is that through eminent domain?
That's correct. Even with the detour option, we're impacting four parcels. We need about six tenths of an acre. We go to the north, we're looking at about three parcels, about 1.4 acre, so a delta of eight tenths of an acre. So it's not a whole lot of land, but it is some land. But looking at the properties to the north with the detour option, we need about 20 feet, linear feet along the project within those two properties.
Okay.
But if we do the permanent shift to the north, we need about 75 feet at the maximum from the northern part.
So about 75 feet more, that's about 35, it was 35 feet just with the width of the bridge, correct? With the new bridge going in, you're going to need about 35 foot of more right-of-way? Is that, that's what, what I've heard. I just missed.
Right. That, that, we need about 20 feet more for the detour.
20 additional feet on each side?
But with the permanent shift to the north, it'd be 75 feet.
75 feet, so there's next.
But then it does taper and transition from there, as I'm kind of seeing the exhibit.
Okay.
Gentlemen, would y'all pull those back, kind of face them where the, the audience can see them? Just, I mean, you, that's fine. Yeah, something like that. Just, I'd like for everybody to be able to see it.
Yeah, we've got pictures.
We, we got a picture here, yep.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick thing, and I'm, I'm done with my questions for them. I had a, a meeting with the board and with a group of, of concerned citizens. Mostly, 99% of them were from Little River Air Park, which is the, which is the subdivision right at the bridge. In fact, it straddles both north and the east and west side of the, of the river. And we talked about it. I told them that I just want to give them all the information, let them determine what they really, which direction they want to go, and then I'll follow whatever they feel like that they need to do. But I know after talking with them, that eminent domain was, was an option that they, that none of them really wanted to see. Two of the three properties that are affected on this particular plan is, are in that park. And there's a couple of concerns on the eminent domain that we have to address. If we were to take this much property, if they were to take this much property and use this, obviously, we're going to have a couple of lots that are, I believe will become non-conforming lots. And we would have, and we have no variances to offer in our LDR. So, so we'd, we'd have to address that issue as well as about eight months? You lived there about eight months before all this happened? The owner of the property, one of the, one of the properties bought this property about eight months before all of this happened, and all of a sudden, he didn't even get the letter. His, the former owner of the property got the letter. He had to get it from DOT. And, and I'll be honest with you, if I bought a piece of property that was, and by the way, it's a beautiful piece of property. If you go out there and look at it, thank you, Mr. Lacroix, for allowing me to go out there and look. It's, it's going to be affected one way or the other on this bridge, but it is, is a beautiful piece of property, and I'd hate to have to go through that same process as well. And I don't doubt DOT's ability to pay, for, pay the whatever going rate that would, that would satisfy as far as financially what's going on, and then put things back where it was. This eminent domain, to me, is not a, is, should only be used in a last resort.
Mr. Richardson, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
I can waste them really quick.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah, just, obviously, I can see there's, there's people here tonight for this reason. Has there been a study done? I mean, what is the traffic normally on that road? I mean...
The traffic, we're looking about 500 vehicles per day is what we look at. And about 9% trucks. So you do have quite a few trucks using that road.
And, and I'd probably add that at least one of them a day are over the weight limits when they go across it, so.
Right.
Do I have any more questions or comments from the board for these gentlemen at this time? I mean, we can, we can have more discussion, but I would like to get some...
Can I just ask one question? So on your two options, you do have, the permanent requires the most land and eminent domain. The, the detour option, have y'all already spoke with landowners? Are they willing to, nobody's willing to give property or sell property for one option versus another option, or?
Typically, we don't approach the property owners. We do hold the public meeting and invite everybody kind of in the area to the, the public meeting and kind of gauge based on that. And then once we get into the right-of-way phase, in which we select an alternative, which right-of-way is scheduled for 2022, we approach them, the individual property owners, and start working through that negotiation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Harris, you got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Browning, I, I think we got the response on the estimated cost for the temporary bridge versus building where we are today. What was the, what's the cost difference between rebuilding the bridge where it is now versus moving to the north?
It's 1.9 million to do the detour, and 2.2 complete project cost, right-of-way, CEI, engineering and all that, 2.2 million to shift the, the permanent shift to the north. It's a delta of 340,000 for everything.
Does that include the eminent domain?
That includes the right-of-way, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Is that given no legal challenges?
No, no.
That would cause that to go higher or lower, or? I don't, I don't know what you normally face, so.
We, we normally anticipate some of those, but yes, it's include, I mean, that's typically our right-of-way appraisal, and we go from there.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's my understanding, Mr. Vatt, that as soon as we're just having public discussion, we don't have to swear anybody in?
Yes, sir. This is just...
At this time, if we have some folks wishing to speak, we make your way to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a couple of comments real quick?
Absolutely.
We were asked to take a look at 176th, where that unpaved road has culverts, and it, when the county floods, it floods there as well. And some possibility of improving the drainage through there with additional culverts. So I've talked to our staff, and with the timeline associated with this project, there's plenty of time to go in there and do that. That will answer a simple question about that unpaved road and the ability to try to manage that drainage differently. We could put more culverts in there and raise that road elevation in order to accommodate that, that portion of the temporary detour if it were to occur.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Ron Green, 7911, 182nd Place, McAlpin. I'm here tonight representing the Flying Little River Homeowners Association. It's over 150 members, and you can see a few of them out here tonight. I have a prepared statement I'm going to read. The 180th Street Bridge and Little River itself divides our community in half. Approximately one half of the airpark residence and one aircraft runway lie on the east side of the river, with the other runway and the other half of the residence on the west side of the river. In February 2019, as the DOD told us here earlier, they held a preliminary design public information meeting for residents to discuss the proposed bridge replacement, a design requiring a road closure. They listened to our residents' concerns and came out with a final design, a new bridge on the north side of the current bridge. The DOT saw and heeded our residents' need of no road closure. This design, using eminent domain, was the only solution we were aware of until last week. We now know from our county commissioner that four options were looked at by DOT. Two of the options, both with no detour, but with one building a permanent bridge to the north and the other a permanent bridge to the south, required the use of eminent domain. Our community belief is that the use of eminent domain should never be considered if any other viable solution exists. One must remember, we are the government, all the people, for the people, by the people. If we don't help protect others' property, we're not protecting our own. These two options should be off the table. Two other options were available. The first satisfies both our demonstrated community needs of no road closure by building a temporary bridge to the south side of the current bridge, for use during construction, and the minimum use of eminent domain. This option, as explained to our association, was rejected by DOT due to its higher cost. Our understanding here is that additional money spent could cause impact by delaying other projects downstream in our county. This is a concern, but it eliminates the need to use eminent domain, and the other projects would only be delayed, not canceled. Our community is in agreement that this is the proper and only solution to the problem at hand. We stand together that it meets the demonstrated need, prevents unworthed taking of land, and is the best use of current funds at this time. The one remaining option is a road closure, causing a one-year split in our community or more if there are delays. In 2016, the bridge was closed for repairs for approximately 10 months, with no advanced planning possible by the county. If this option is chosen, the county needs to make assurances to plan for and use county resources to eliminate or reduce the effects of known issues. These issues have been articulated to our District 5 County Commissioner. He is well aware of them, has already started to work with the community to address them. That is not enough. A committed effort of the entire Board of County Commissioners over the next three years to mitigate these issues would be required to make this acceptable to a community that has already experienced a 10-month road closure. To name a few of the issues, some have been talked about already. The north detour adds 2.1, 2.9 miles and is a graded dirt road crossing the Little River and susceptible to washout. Culverts at the Little River Crossing need to be enlarged to allow the passage of more water to alleviate washouts and all but the most severe weather threats. The use of county water trucks to keep the dust down and increased use of county road graders to maintain the road due to the increased usage. The south detour is paved and adds 6.3 miles and is not in very good shape and should be repaired to the maximum ability of the county. EMS service cannot be compromised. EMS service and routes would need to be analyzed and refined. EMS personnel from providing stations would need to be trained to ensure no reduction in current services or response time regardless of the situation. Contingencies must be in place for all possible scenarios. School bus service needs to be addressed. During the last road closure, parents were required to drive twice daily the detour routes to meet the bus on one side of the detour or the other. Find a way, either by county or DOT resources, to build a temporary pedestrian path and bridge in the same location as the DOT proposed temporary bridge. This alone would reduce considerable back-and-forth traffic on the detour roads and increase the safety to pedestrians transiting the area. As an HOA, we maintain over 35 acres of green space, which includes two runways and associated aircraft taxiways and all our own private road maintenance. As an association, we only have one tractor operated by our member volunteers. This road closure will require moving the tractor via detour roads side to side every three to four days. Each movement of the tractor takes two round trips, one round trip by car and one round trip by tractor, with associated increased costs of fuel and wear and tear on the equipment. The sale at a considerable reduced cost of a county tractor could alleviate the constant relocation of our tractor. Our current budget does not support the purchase of a tractor nor take into account the operating and repair expenses for two tractors and mower decks. The reduced cost here would have to be considerable. In closing, our community believes the temporary bridge and no road closure is the correct solution to maintain 180th Street open during construction. Under no circumstance should eminent domain be considered when any other viable options are available. And a one-year road closure, splitting in half a homeowners' association and closing 180th Street should be avoided at all costs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Green?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, it may have already been answered, but I'm, I'm listening to Mr. Green speaking, and I see on the, on the brochure that I have, it says that major inconvenience to residents and visitors utilizing 180th Street and potential economic loss to a local business, moblix, custom meat. Also, on the airport side, how, how much would it affect the air, airpark? Because you said that north and south is pretty much splitting up.
East, west.
Yes, it wouldn't affect air traffic specifically. It affects us as a community. We're a very close-knit community. We all have the same passion or hobby of flying. So we're constantly back and forth across the bridge on 180th Street to reach our neighbors. And it basically splits perfectly our community in half and requires long detours to even visit our own neighbors.
Okay. And I think this, this question, pose this question to DOT. Apparently, you all have pretty much looked at a rerouting or the temporary, that's the only way there, in and out on that, on these different locations that you, that you have there.
Those are the most, the two most direct routes, yes. I mean, unfortunately, they're rather lengthy. I mean, 2.9 miles seems somewhat reasonable, but it is a dirt road, narrow dirt road at that, and then, yes, the other one being that 6.3.
I have a question. What, you may have already said, if, what's the timeframe on this project?
We're looking about nine to 12 months to replace this bridge.
That's what the detour option, though, is it not? Then the, the bottom of the second page, Davis.
Yeah, about nine to 12 months for the detour option and 12 to 18 months with the, the permanent shift.
I'm sorry.
Nine to 12 months for the detour option and then 12 to 18 months with the permanent shift. So about six months more, three to six months more if we do not do the detour. So it will take a little longer.
Got you. Thank you for that.
And one thing I want to point out, we are raising this road. I mean, that's some of the need for the, for the right of way or whatever. We are raising this bridge about three feet, so it is going to be a little higher than it was before.
Only three feet? I thought some, I heard the term 16 feet the other day and I was like, that's a long ways up. That's going to be, you know, with.
No, the existing PGL is about 81.2 and we're raising it to 84.15.
Okay. So it's about three feet, guys.
Thank you. Yes.
The word that got to us was 16 feet.
Yeah.
Three feet, I feel, is insufficient. When the last tropical storm Debbie came through, the water was up above the current bridge's guardrail, completely above it. But three feet, I don't think would be sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do I have anyone else from the public? Please make your way to the podium. Welcome, sir. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, Mr. Harris, Mr. Pravat, I'm David La Croix. My wife and I are the property owners most affected by this project. We bought our property in January of last year, at the time we knew that the Little River Bridge had been repaired not long before. But we had no clue that DOT was proposing to rebuild it until after we'd closed on the purchase. And we'd been looking for several years for a property like this one. And when we found it, we fell in love with it, mostly because of the pond that's right behind the house. The house is oriented toward that pond. And there's a veranda all along the back of the house, second story. The master bedroom, which is closest to the bridge, has a lot of windows overlooking the pond, as do the living room, the dining room, the kitchen, the other two bedrooms. And of course, if you look at the pond from any of those rooms or from the veranda, you also see the bridge. But right now, our property contains a lot of large, mature live oaks, sweet gums, water oaks, longleaf pines, and other trees next to the bridge that form a buffer from the cars crossing the bridge, both from their noise and their lights. After we bought the property, we learned of the proposed bridge reconstruction. It meant DOT would be taking about 20 feet of our land, some of our fence, and a few of the trees between our home and the bridge. We were upset about that, of course, but we felt that it would be futile to protest it because the bridge needed to be replaced and the taking was necessary. Besides, we still have a lot of those trees left between us and the bridge to block our view of the bridge as well as blocking the view of drivers and passengers into our home. After there were complaints received by DOT about the detour, DOT revised the project and now they'll be taking 75 feet of our land, as you heard. They will also be taking almost 600 feet of wood fencing that I spent a lot of time and money this past summer rebuilding, dogproofing, and painting. And they'll be taking a $3,000 automatic gate we just put in in September. They'll also be taking the $1,000 faux stone columns that I installed myself in front of the gate. They'll also be taking about 60 feet of the new fence we put up this year between our house and the pond to keep our dogs out of the pond. But the worst thing is that this proposal will result in them taking all of the trees between our house and the bridge. They'll be moving the bridge considerably closer to our home, raising it and angling it more toward our home so that the lights from traffic traveling east will shine almost directly into our bedroom window. And will no longer have any buffer from the sight and noise of all the traffic crossing the bridge, which, as you know, includes a lot of semis using it as a shortcut, many buses, RVs, construction vehicles, and frankly, gawkers who sometimes stop on the bridge to admire the pond. At the board meeting that Commissioner Richardson attended Saturday morning, he outlined all these options and he found out a lot of the members of the subdivision there complained. Actually, it's four different subdivisions that use both of those runways. And their primary concern that they expressed then was that they have two runways and only one more, and it's a pain for them to, it caused them a lot of delay moving the mower along that dirt road, slow-moving mower, from one airstrip to the other. For the benefit of DOT and the commission, there are a lot of people who are not here tonight who are absolutely against DOT taking more land than they need to for this project. But 180 of them are here by way of a petition that I've brought and I'll file with the clerk. I'll have a copy for Mr. Browning. What the petitions say is that these people are absolutely opposed to the DOT taking additional property and fences and gates and especially trees solely for the purpose of avoiding a detour during the bridge reconstruction. They say that the taking of additional property is a waste of public tax dollars, that the temporary detour is a better option, and that unnecessarily destroying live oaks and other large trees is environmentally insensitive and shameful. Mr. Richardson, I know that you're counting votes. And if you look at those petitions, most of the people who signed it are in your district. They're your constituents. Well over half of them live along 180th Street or just off of it, and they're directly affected by the detour, but they still protest doing anything else. The courts will only uphold the right of government agencies to take property by eminent domain if the taking is reasonably necessary. In this case, DOT's first proposal was apparently what DOT and its engineers and its policymakers thought was the best and most cost-effective option for replacing Little River Bridge. The lesser taking for that proposal was arguably reasonably necessary. I don't argue with that myself. The greater taking they now propose is completely unnecessary and DOT may be spending a lot more tax dollars in a futile attempt to get a court to sanction it. My wife and I and all the people who signed the petitions, I'm leaving with you, ask you to do what's right, both morally and legally, and to recommend to DOT to return to the original proposal with the detour. I appreciate the sentiments expressed tonight by Mr. Green on behalf of the subdivision, I really do. And I understand that the detour is going to be inconvenient in several ways. The first way is that part of the 2.9-mile detour is, as we've already discussed, 176th Street, which also crosses Little River. And where it crosses, the road is too low and the culvert is blocked, partially blocked or inadequate. And when there's a bad storm, the road occasionally washes out there. That means people have to use a much lengthier detour. In my opinion, and I've talked with Mr. Harris about this, I think it would take about $30,000 to raise that roadbed and improve that culvert to avoid the problem. That would also benefit all the people who live along that road and have to use it regularly. And I've already told Mr. Harris that if the county wants to do those repairs to that road so it'll be a more suitable detour, I'll contribute half the cost, up to $15,000. The second major inconvenience is the problem of the subdivisions getting one mower back and forth between the two airstrips while the detour is in place. I will find a used mower and buy it and allow the subdivisions to use it on the second runway all the time there's a detour there. The third inconvenience I can think of is that some people will have to spend an extra four and a half minutes to get to Dollar General and the post office. And about that one, I really can't, I can't do anything except to remind you that this small inconvenience will be temporary while the taking of our property will be forever. And when our trees are destroyed, it'll take 50 years to replace them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any questions for this gentleman?
I don't. I think he deserves bigger applause than that. You ought to give it up. Mr. Chairman, I'd just say that the issues addressed by Mr. Green, I think the issues addressed by Mr. La Croix, what was said by Mr. Green and what I got so far from the, from that community is that they agree with him that we certainly shouldn't, we should avoid eminent domain at all, at every cost we can. So I think that those two center options, if we had looked at all four of them, put them all on the table, those two center options, just, I would feel comfortable if we just took them away and then just looked at the, weighed the, the expensive option versus the cheaper option. Obviously, the expensive option being acreage bridge and the cheaper option being the detour. And I have said to the community, if, I've asked them if we can mitigate these issues along the detour route and make this something that is a little bit easier to deal with, if we can deal with the concerns that Mr. Green had, had mentioned, EMS. And I've gotten Eddie back there. If he can, if he wants to speak to the EMS issues and stuff like that, the concerns over that, he can. He has given me full assurances that there will not be any impacts at all to this change. And if, if the detour sounds a little bit better, I'll be honest with you, I've, I've mentioned to them that this is, this extra money is probably coming out of our bucket of money that we get from DOT in the future for five-year projects. I'd like to ask you if you would give me an honest opinion about that.
Honestly, honestly, no. These, these are special funds. This money is just for off-system bridge replacement project. It is a statewide pot of money, so you are delaying a project. There's only so many much funds, I mean, we all know that, right? So it is a special pot of money, but it is just for off-system bridge replacements. So it's going to delay somebody else's.
Somebody else's project? Okay.
And it may be yours, I mean, but more than likely it's someone else's.
Let me emphasize, maybe yours.
Yeah.
Listen, we've got another bridge right now.
We got, we got a bridge that we need that other money for.
Yeah. If I could just speak to that and, and I appreciate Mr. Browning, Mr. Brock coming over here, but I'm going to tell you, we do experience, we're on the receiving end of that a lot of times, that it cost us another project. And it has nothing to do with what these two gentlemen would like to see happen. It's out of their control. But we have had it with 164th Street Bridge. I've been talking to DOT for eight years now and that project is supposed to be coming. But with the next flood in this county, we could have another bridge in this county. It might be delayed for eight or nine or 10 years because there isn't sufficient funding to, because those pots of money are only so large.
Exactly.
And we know in this county, we have far greater need than there is funding to satisfy. So I would just encourage the board to consider that we're dealing with a pot of money that we're always, we want a DOT asking for our portion of that if we can get it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I think I kind of always, some people get tired of hearing me preach, but I always say I'm not interested in kicking the can down the road. So I'd like to ask this board to let us have some discussion.
I think I've seen someone with their hand up.
Okay. We'll get right with you in just, just a second. But I'd just like to make some decisions and, and not just talk about it, get something done for these folks.
Mr. Chairman, before we, may I interrupt just for a quick second? Before we make a decision on, on anything like this, I still believe that there's still some conversation that needs to be had with the community about all of the concerns that, that are addressed in the detour. If, if, and, and they may very well address them tonight, and, which is fine by me, but I know that we, you are not asking us for an opinion on this at this point. Is that correct? Stephen?
It's really up to you if you want to provide some input going forward. I mean, we have kind of two options, I guess, on the table. I mean, our recommended alternative at this point is the northern option. But if we do want to go back to the detour, if that's where the board wants to go back to, we will, I mean, we will take that into consideration and go back and see what we can do.
I've definitely promised to stand behind the community, so whatever they, they want to do, I want to stand behind, so.
I just don't like putting things off. And the sooner we make a decision on this, the sooner DOT has direction and the sooner all these folks that's concerned knows what's going on instead of us just talking about it and talking about another meeting. But ma'am, I'm sorry, please come to the mic and say your name and address. I didn't mean to be rude.
You're not at all. Thank you. My name's Ann Ferguson and I, 18603, 75th Place. And what I wanted, the issue that I'm worried about, I had to travel a lot across that detour last time and it's much more than a two and a half minute trip. We had a lot of rain. That road is so narrow and when it's wet, and it was wet a whole lot with, the whole time we had to travel it, it is slick. And, and sometimes you go down and part of the road is missing. And I'm not exaggerating it. I have three families and my family live on the other side and there are some times when I have to go the middle of the night because I have a son that's blind. Anyway, I need to get across that. Okay. What I'm saying is that my whole concern is the danger of that road. And I'd like to know that there's going to be some kind of assurance that it really is going to be made safer because you're, and it is so pitch black out there, it's unbelievable.
There's a lot of trees out there.
And there are some places where the road is one car wide. I got stuck on that one night. I'd already started down soaking wet and looking to see if the roads caved in and another car is coming at me the other side. I ended up having to back up on that sticky slime, scared to death, couldn't see because of the lights, and it is a very hard danger. And there's going to be a fact that possibly we might be needing to travel that for a year and a half. I'm not concerned about the Dollar General, I'm concerned about safety. So I would just like some kind of assurances for the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? Back to the board.
I could say something.
Yes, ma'am. Please make your way to the microphone.
I'm Pat Bloomfield. I do live there also. In the timeframe that we've had the problems and then, in the interim when there was nothing, my husband went to the hospital twice. He has dementia and he has, he's legally blind. You know, I realize that the EMT can get there, but if there is a detour, will they be able to, if it's really bad, helicopter them out? How would they handle that? I mean, I know they can go there, but they would have to take the same detour we do. So I wonder how that would work.
We've got Mr. Hand here. He's going, would answer that for us maybe, clarify a little bit.
Chairman, commissioners, I looked into the distances between, on each side of the bridge, basically, and there's only two tenths of a mile difference from the McAlpin Station, which is the, the station that would normally respond in that zone, whether they go the route down 129 and across 180th Street or across 252, down 49 and back to the west on 180th Street. No time difference in driving, basically. Also, Station 3 is a straight shot up, up County Road 49. If they were going to have to go to the, you know, if they were responding to the area and had to go to the, the west side of the river, it would be a slight delay because they would have to, you know, they would go up the south side detour if it was detoured, which would take them a little bit of extra time. But if they're on the east side, there's only one minute difference in their response time, even though it's two miles farther, because they're a straight shot up 49 with less turns and stops and everything. So I feel very confident in either way that we go, whether it's detour or temporary bridge, whatever, our response times are going to, there's not going to be an issue with response times unless, you know, they're coming from a different station, which wouldn't matter whether the bridge is out or not, there, you know, there would be an increased response time, so.
I feel confident also that if this road detour did go in place, that you and your staff could have some meetings on it.
Oh, most definitely. Yeah, we, we did this last time when it was closed. We, everybody knew the routes that they needed to take. We changed our normal dispatch procedures a little bit and, and, you know, for that timeframe on which stations would respond depending on which side of the river the call was on.
Absolutely.
So the, the public can be assured that, you know, there's not going to be an increased timeframe for us to get there, whether it's fire or EMS.
Thank you, Mr. Hand.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand that you want the project started in 2023? Is that what I was, 2023? And Mr. Harris, I know you had mentioned earlier that would open, have plenty of opportunity for us to correct some of the problems on that road, build it up, culverts, tree trimming.
The largest, yeah, the largest thing, though, is the concern with the water if we have a wet season, not, you know... Now, you know, hopefully, we'll get a good weatherman that lies to us real good and tells, if he'll tell us it's going to rain every day, then it probably won't.
Right.
So my, my hope is it'll be drier, but we're going to go ahead. I've already spoken to our staff that handles putting in culverts, and we're going to plan to go ahead and make improvements right there where that, where Little River crosses, 176th. And we've got plenty of time to do it.
Mr. Fleming, you got something?
No, 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 I'm just listening. But I feel confident that staff would have things in order.
I would think the only thing I would add is maybe get with the sheriff during this time and have someone out there, the presence as well, just to make sure everyone's not speeding, doing the speed limit for those residents out there and just keeping everything safe during that time. That's, uh...
I'd say that...
You have something to say?
Yeah, of course I do. The, one of the...
I was going to speak for just a second, if I could.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say, I'm grateful for how this meeting's going and the professionalism we have here between the two groups. I mean, this is how you get something done. I know a lot of, we all sit home and watch TV and get sick to our stomach, well, what's going on? But to make a change and a difference in a country, it starts in a county. And I just want to tell everybody here, I'm proud of all of you, and we're going, we're going to work through this, and it's going to work out for everybody. But I just, I feel glad to tell y'all that it's just how you accomplish things.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Richardson. I didn't mean to disrespect you.
That trumps anything that I had to say. But I do have a question about, about the potential go back, going back to a temporary bridge solution. The temporary bridge, if, which I don't, at this point, I don't think that that's probably going to be a likely solution, but if the temporary bridge was the solution, would it not save trees by putting it on the north side and just working around, I mean, on the south side and not, not going on the north side and cutting trees down just for a temporary bridge?
If you do the temporary bridge, you still have to widen out the footprint. You have to build the roadway bed. You have to put temporary bridge in, so you still have all your impacts. I mean, the southern option versus the northern option, you're still going to need the ride away, you're still going to have the utility. So yes, you're still going to have the impacts. I mean, unfortunately, the department's really down to the two options, the detour or the northern shift. So we're really not looking at a temporary diversion due to the costs, the impacts.
I heard you say that earlier, and I was going to ask that question, but you just answered it. You keep talking, we keep talking about four options.
Right.
But you said earlier, there's only two options on the table.
Either the detour or the permanent shift to the north is the only thing really the department's...
I'm just making sure I heard you correctly earlier.
We did study the other options, like we mentioned, four or five other options, but we...
But regardless of this board's decision, y'all narrowed it down to two. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, yes. We've narrowed it down, really, well, we narrowed it down to the detour, went to the public.
Right.
The north option was the most...
After all your feedback, regardless of what else you hear, you're still down to two options.
Right. Either the detour or the northern shift.
Okay. So you're not even going to concern, even, even taking into account possibility of, if the board said we'd rather you do the aquar bridge, you're not even going to give it a second thought?
I mean, honestly, I think the southern detour was about $200,000 more than the 2.9 million, right? Didn't we?
Yeah, it was a little bit more.
So, yeah, I mean, we're starting to really increase the cost, really for no benefit, so.
Okay.
I think at this point in time, we need to kind of get right down to the, where all our hearts lie.
Well, I'll tell you, I stand on this one thing. I will not vote for eminent domain in any way, shape, or form, so that leads me to one other. Glad to hear you say that. I don't want to cause any hindrance to anyone, but I can't, I can't support eminent domain. I would ask DOT not to. And if you've only got two options, obviously, detours doesn't have eminent domain, the northern permanent shift does. I think our conversation needs to be how to mitigate their problems through the detour.
That's...
Because, you know, if it was my property and you put me in the situation of the gentleman, I'd fight you tooth and nail.
Absolutely.
To save my piece of property. And I don't think there's any of y'all out there that would disagree with that.
I just want to clear up one thing. We are going to need property regardless, so it is really an eminent domain.
Yes. I think if you come back and say you need a sliver versus a chunk, that you'll probably have somebody work with you. I mean, I'm not speaking for them, but I...
It's approximately 20 feet on each side to leave the bridge where it is of additional.
Right.
With the folks that are here tonight, are they in somewhat of an agreeance that they're okay, you're okay with the 20 feet? Just, I'm in support of the detour and, and us taking care of the bridge that we got over there, the culverts that we need to address for the water flow and making that road safer. I'm not in favor of taking anybody's property. I don't want somebody to come take mine. And, you know, it's, it's just, it's hard for me to ever support it, unless it's absolutely necessary, and in this case, I just don't see it. I understand it's, it's inconvenience, but we get inconvenienced every day. And I don't want anybody's feelings to be hurt, but obviously, some peoples are. We're in a position to make tough decisions here, but we have to make them, is the problem. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Since we're looking at just those two options, and before you throw it back to the Department of Transportation with your decision, I'd just like you to consider the one point I made about a temporary pedestrian bridge on the south side during construction that would allow a pedestrian to cross the area safely and be able to get back and forth to our community that, that way. If they could consider doing that.
Is, is that something that we could... Stephen?
I was wondering.
I need to put you on the spot.
Right, we need an answer.
Is that something you can assemble for?
Is that something we could...
So typically, on a road like this, a rural roadway, since there's no sidewalks leading up to it, I mean, we're not going to maintain a sidewalk during construction because there's really nowhere to go almost, honestly. So typically, no, on a rural roadway, we do not provide a temporary sidewalk. On a detour traffic, we want to keep people out of that construction area.
Yeah. Is there any place in that easement, from the utility side all the way over, that, I don't know, utility may be a different story, but any place in there that's away from where the, where the traffic or the construction is going to be? Any place in there that something like that could be put? And if so, what would the typical cost of something like that happen to be?
Honestly, I don't have a typical cost for that. I mean...
Okay.
Here's what's going to happen in reality. When they raise the bridge, they need the additional right away because they've got ditching to deal with on both sides. So you're not going to be dealing with flat areas out there either for people to be walking through. You're dealing with swales that are created because of the increase in height and trying to maintain ditch lines that have to flare out to the sides. And it's a construction site.
That's what I was going to say. Once they go out, let it out to bid, and it's under contract, it's no longer a county road, it's a construction site at that point in time. The construction company or their liability insurance is not going to allow foot traffic on the property.
That's going to be the problem, is the...
Yes, sir.
I have an area on my property that's about 30 feet north of the existing bridge, where the creek is very shallow, and I have an open path. All I have to do is take down a part of my fence. I'll create a path through there that's plenty wide enough for golf carts and people walking. 10 months out of the year, that creek is dry. People can walk and drive right across it, across the river. Walt Williams' property has an area where I can clear nothing but brush and vines and have the same path all the way out to the other side of the bridge. Path will go from quite a bit beyond the end of the existing guard railing to quite a bit beyond on the other side. I can take care of that problem.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be curious if that, if that sounds like something reasonable that you can work with, the community working together.
Thank you.
But will the rest of the community be, welcome, what, LaFleur?
LaCroy.
LaCroy. Will the rest of the community be willing to work with what he's talking about?
Gentlemen, I think we have an answer.
With that being said, Commissioner Hale, you got any comments?
I don't. Just, just thankful to see us all working together here. I really am. Really.
If I'm not speaking out of turn, I think that this board is in support of the detour. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would say that. I feel your pain, every individual out there, and the ladies when they spoke, when the ladies spoke, when they said at night, when you're driving, I mean, that, that can be kind of scary. It's very scary. A wet road and you're sliding, slipping and sliding. I think that we as a county, and I think our Board of County Commissioners, along with the Public Works Director, I think we can, he can, can eliminate some of this stuff when he says that we have enough time. They're going to start at 2023, that they can get some of these roads, some of these projects, ditches so that the water will flow properly. And I would like to support that habit, you know. I feel your pain when, I'm in District 2, but I am the county commissioner. I have rode on some of those roads, maybe tomorrow, no, maybe Thursday, Friday, may come out to some of y'all's property and look at it, see what you're dealing with. Nothing I can do, but I'm most certain like to come out and see some of the issues and just, I know it's hard on you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. With that being said, I think we'd like to let DOT know that we'd like to pursue the detour project, go that route. Do I have any other comments on this?
I know you said it was nine to 12 months on the construction. Y'all said y'all are looking to start it in 2023?
The project's schedule is to let in December of 2022, so usually about three to four months to get to work. And so, yeah, usually spring, summer of 2023 is when they would actually go to construction at this point.
Mr. Harris?
It may slide out a little bit as we approach, you know, approach 2023, but it is on our fiscal year 2023, which ends June 30th of 2023, so.
That gives you and our supervisors ample enough time to look at any improvements that we need to make and get them done, doesn't it?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's not a problem. I checked on that earlier, so yes, we've got adequate amount of time to get that taken care of.
We got folks here on both sides of the aisle willing to work together. And I'm pretty sure that the county, we can definitely do our part to do what we need to do for that road to make it safe for the public.
If we could only pave the other work, repave the other road.
That's enough for tonight, Mr. Richardson. You brought us a pretty tall order in here.
I think you got us in a hot seat already, Mr. Richardson.
With that being said, I think we're going to move on item 18 to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick comment, I want to speak to these gentlemen that have been here with us this evening. They run around to communities all over the district, probably have a lot of late meetings and daytime meetings as well. And I've met with Mr. Browning on other issues in this county. I want you to take a message back over there to the office, tell everybody over there we really appreciate the relationship that we're able to enjoy with your office over there, DOT office.
We truly appreciate working with Swanee County also. Thank you for your time, and thank you all for showing up and participating in this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, we're going item 18. Any updates, concerns on 136 project?
No, sir.
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, real quick, before everyone...
Hold on just a second, folks. Don't run out on us yet. Just, just one minute.
Just wanted to say one thing. I appreciate your response. You guys care about your community, and you care not just about your community, but you care about the greater Branford community, and it shows by how you stand up and, and reach out across the aisle with people. So thank you very much for coming, and, and I'm glad that we can work something out on this.
Yeah, y'all, y'all stay with us just a minute, because we don't have a couple of minutes, we're going to get out of here. We'd like, I'm sure some of us would like to talk with you. We'll move on to, we don't have any other public concerns and comments that I know of. Hearing none, no administrators, we're good, Mr.... Okay, board members, Mr., you just spoke.
I just spoke.
Mr. Fleming, anything else?
I don't have anything. I would just say that I know that we are in the year 2020. It's good to see everybody. We had a safe holiday, and we had a very prosperous holiday, and we look forward for 2020.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Campbell?
I'd just say for those of y'all that were there and those that weren't, Hooked on Heroes group today did a permanent silhouette for the Veterans Park. They made it out of steel and reinforced it with some angled steel in the back. They had it power-coated, and they designated it to the city and the county this morning. Just hats off to them for what they do. That's all.
Commissioner Hale?
I'll just echo that there. I was there this morning, and that was, it was very nice. It was, it was great work that was done there. And I just want to say, in case I don't get to talk to everyone here tonight, I do appreciate you guys showing up and having a concern about your community, not, not just there, but all of Swanee County. We appreciate all of you guys. Thank you all very much.
I just echo their sentiments. I mean, I'll leave here tonight, and I'm not going to lie to anybody. I come here tonight, and just like with the comments I made to start with, you know, we're going to be professional and be courteous, and, because a lot of times, these meetings don't go this way. And I just want each one of you to know how proud I am, my heart smiles for, for taking care of business and, and working together as citizens of this great county that we represent. We want to thank you for that. With that being said, all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second. I tried to scare him when I walked in. I told him, I said, "Good luck. I've been chairman for three years, and I never had this many people in a meeting."
Never. We got it.